You have your, um, you have your thing on share screen, so. I'm unable to access who's recording too.
Yeah, hey Phil, this is Jerry. Um, I've got the same issue.
Okay, one second.
Somebody is sharing the screen, we need to get out of there.
Right, so Shelby, the tech person from Shelby should resolve this.
Okay. Participants.
You want me out of the meeting, I'll just leave. Guess somebody took me out.
It's like your screen, you know, because it has the Lino stuff on it, here you go.
Okay. I put him into a waiting room.
Something happened, right?
I can admit him in, um, once his, uh, his agenda item is up.
Just make sure he doesn't, he doesn't take control of the meeting though.
Yep, gotcha.
Hi everyone, this is Jenny Jewell from RTP at the end of the street.
Hello.
Hey Julie, has anyone indicated they weren't planning on attending or participating?
I haven't heard of anybody not showing up, Chairman.
Okay. I'll wait a few minutes. So the other ones I think we're missing are opponent DeCicco.
I'm on. Yep, Anthony's here.
Yeah, there's, there's, alright, we got everybody. Uh, with that, I'll call the meeting to order. Uh, it's the Secretary to call the roll, please.
Mr. Dallo?
Here.
Mr. DeCicco?
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Here.
Mr. Meredith?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Appone?
Here.
Mr. Flynn?
Here.
Chairman Moffett, we have a call.
Great, thank you. Uh, first item is approval of the agenda.
Don't move.
Support.
It's moved by Dallas, support by DeCicco, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes from July thirteenth.
Don't move.
Or. Moved by DeCicco, support by.
Meredith.
Meredith, any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, so this evening we've got five items. Um, a few came before, uh, the first one is a rezoning petition. Number zero two dash two zero and site plan number two zero dash zero five, special land use. Number one, Mark Lockwood, uh, if the petitioner is here. If you want to review briefly what, when, what your request is and, and how you address the issues that, uh, that were raised previously.
In light of, we just received a, we had addressed.
First off, first off, I need to know who, who's speaking.
Steve Gabries, VP of Development at Lockwood Companies.
And now your address is.
Two seven 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 Franklin Road, Southfield, Michigan, four eight three oh four.
Okay.
Um, just in light, we had, we had one meeting, we appreciate this. Planning Commission's time, we, we provided information. To the planning department, where there were four main items that were brought up last time, um, that we provided information to. Um, but in light of receiving, just over two hours ago, we received another re-review letter that has substantial. New information on it. It's that we have to address some of these new items, it's. We request that we get tabled to the following meeting, um, if at all possible. We'd have time to address these, I don't know, the letter that came, it was emailed to us at four fifty today. For this evening's meeting.
Alright, um, does anyone from the board wish to. Ask any questions before we entertain the request of the petitioner? Hearing none, um, unless the board wants to, I'll entertain and motion postpone this item.
Don't move.
Moved by Flynn, was it?
Yep.
Thank you. Support.
Support.
Support by Appone. I think. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Uh, hearing none, uh. Commissioner Flynn?
Yeah.
Commissioner Appone?
Yeah.
Commissioner DeCicco?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
And the Chair, yes.
Thank you for your time.
Alright, so. And then there was, you know, the board was all shared with that correspondence. When it's appropriate or, or what you should have or shouldn't received, you know, is, is less, uh. You know, I have faith in our planning department and, and how they communicate, um, so. We'll just look forward to seeing you at a future meeting perhaps. Uh, next item is site plan number two zero dash zero nine, Christopher Dooley for Valvoline LLC.
I'm Jason Hunt, I represent Valvoline, actually, uh, I'm substituting for Chris Dooley.
Yeah, Jason, do you have a last name?
Jason Hunt, address is one hundred Valvoline Way, Lexington, Kentucky, four zero five zero nine.
At least we saved you a little bit of a drive doing it this way.
Definitely.
Great, alright, why don't you, why don't you give a, just a brief overview of, of, uh, what you're requesting of this body?
We're, we're requesting approval to construct a three bay oil change facility. On or near, uh, near the parking, it's, it's basically a vacant lot. Closest address to, addresses the adjacent Walgreens. Near fifty six eight oh five Van Dyke. Road, it is essentially the new development, Kroger developed, Kroger anchored development near Van Dyke and Twenty Six Mile. Uh, again, it's a three bay oil change facility. Um, I can answer any specific questions regarding the building. Also accompanying me is Kelly Sweater, and she can answer questions specific to the site. The site is Zone C three Shopping Center Business, about one acre, just a little bit over. Again, it's, it's basically a vacant parking lot.
Okay, what percentage, what percentage of, of your business is oil change and is there other services offered out of that, out of your locations?
Predominantly oil change, um, but when you come in, your, your car is. It goes through a, uh, multi-point check to see. Uh, if like, essentially light bulbs, it's safety features, so just, uh. Light bulbs, if they're working or not, turn signals, that sort of thing, so you go through a quick check. If those things are needed, uh, those are, those are replaced at, at that time upon the client's request. That, that, that happens, you know, it's basically happenstance, so that would be maybe one, two percent. Uh, mostly ninety eight, we'll call it percent, oil change.
Okay, alright, that's, that's, I'd ask that question to somebody, uh, at our last meetings. In the, in the matter of fairness, I figured I'd ask again. Uh, Nick, you, you reviewed this for the, the, the department?
Uh, yes, that is correct.
I should, why don't you give, why don't you give us your review, please?
Um, so this, uh, site plan went through the preliminary review process where. Majority of zoning concerns were addressed and identified by the planning department. And the applicant resubmitted their site plans, that's what you see before you. So the comments that we have now are fairly minor, and it could be, and they can be addressed, uh, with another, uh, submission. I mean, the only major comment is that the trash receptacle screenings, screening walls are permitted at a maximum height of six feet. And, uh, I would like to make a correction on item number three in my review comments. Uh, the property. Will require variance for a lot with an area, originally, I had told the applicant that will not require variance. Because I thought that the property had previously been split from the anchor tenant. But, um, just to make sure everything's in order, will require that variance, and the applicant is aware of this. But, um, overall, this site, uh, it fills in a vacant lot like the, like Mr. Hunt said. One of the last vacant lots in that, in that marketplace. And, uh, it's an attractive building and it adds to the services offered in that area.
What kind of variance, what kind of variance do they need? What's the?
Uh, this property only requires a variance for a lot width and area. The C three district has. A large requirement for a lot with an area because it's supposed to attract the large anchor, so when these parcels are subdivided, it's a relatively minor housekeeping variance request.
Yeah, very good, thank you. Uh, to the board, are there any questions of the planning staff or the petitioner? Hearing none, all entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
And who was that?
That's, uh, Anthony.
Anthony, okay, Mr. Appone?
Uh, move to approve site plan twenty dash oh nine for Christopher Dooley. For Valvoline LLC, five six eight oh five Van Dyke. Located on the south side of Twenty Six Mile Road, west of Van Dyke. Uh, oil change facility subject to all submission and review of site plan addressing all department requirements.
Support.
Uh, support by Moore? Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner DeCicco?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Chair, what's your? Alright, good luck.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is a public hearing on site plan number two zero dash one five, special land use number five, Salvador Simone. Um, let me point, um, I'd, I'd spoken with Mr. Appone earlier, and he'd indicated that, uh, that he is a second cousin of the petitioner. Um, I frankly don't believe that is a, would necessarily be a significant conflict, does anyone on the board think that, uh, he should be recused? Hearing none, Mr. Appone, you don't get out of this one.
Thank you.
But if you piss off your family, you're on your own. Alright, uh, to the Secretary, would you read the notice as published, please?
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing, notice is hereby given that the planning commission for the Charter Township of Shelby. McCombe County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following special land use. Applicant Salvatore B. Simone, Simone Contracting Corporation. Six eight one six nineteen and a half mile road Sterling Heights, Michigan, four eight three one four. Proposed use contractor's office, existing building and outdoor storage. Location fifty one two sixty eight Fisher Park Drive. Parcel number twenty three dash zero seven dash sixteen dash three seventy six dash zero thirteen. North of Twenty Three Mile Road between Van Dyke and Mound. Site plan number twenty dash fifteen SLU dash five. Sidwell number twenty three dash zero seven dash sixteen dash three seventy six dash zero thirteen, legal description is as follows. Planning Commission will meet on Monday, July twenty seventh, two thousand twenty at seven PM via Zoom for the purpose of holding a public hearing on special land use application. The meeting will be held via Zoom due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, you may participate at no cost in the virtual meeting by calling the following number. Dial one three one two six two six six seven nine nine, meeting ID eight three one three seven six six nine one seven five. The application for special land use and the site plan may be examined at the planning and zoning department. In the municipal building Monday through Friday from eight thirty AM to five PM. Written comments may be submitted to the planning commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act one ten of two thousand six is amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett Chair, Raquel Moore Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on July eighth, two thousand twenty. Twelve property owners and two applicants were notified by first class mail on July second, two thousand twenty.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all the requirements?
Yes, it did.
Great, uh, and could you explain the uses, the uses under the present zoning and whether this special land use request is appropriate?
The uses under the present zoning are really what are being asked for, light manufacturing, however, because of the, uh, outside storage. Uh, that would be more of a special land use requirement, and that's what they're asking for.
Great, thank you. Uh, format for the, oh, uh, to the Secretary, did we receive any correspondence on this?
No, we did not, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, the format for the public hearing will be as follows, the petitioner representative will give. Uh, the reasons for their request, what they're requesting and, and reasons for it. Um, then the commissioners will, uh, ask questions, uh, or have the opportunity to. I'll then open up the, the floor to the public, um, for any questions or comments they wish to have. Uh, we will take note of those questions or comments and then bring the petitioner back at the end, uh, to answer those questions. This isn't a debate, um, it's, we're just trying to get as much information to make an informed, uh, decision. At this point, is the, uh, the petitioner representative here?
Good evening, Pete Snyder from Logan Land Consultants, representing the petitioner. Simone Contracting, uh, it's good to address you again, although I enjoy doing it face to face rather than Zoom, but, uh, you gotta do what you gotta do. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep, you're fine.
Okay, very good. Um, I have, uh, the site is about a little over one and a half acres, it's on Fisher Park Drive, which is a. Private drive going north off Twenty Three Mile Road between Mound and Van Dyke. The, um, petition, Simone Contracting, uh, would like to purchase this building, it's an existing building, approximately fourteen thousand square feet, a little under that. Wants to occupy the building for his contracting business and. The, he would also like the outside storage that's often, uh, goes along with the contractor's business. A place to store equipment when it's between jobs and a place to store, uh, small batches of material. That are getting ready to go out to jobs. Uh, the petitioner's quite excited about moving into this building, it seems like it's gonna suit his needs very well. So the, um, I, I believe the, the site plan, of course, is, is in front of you, I'm assuming, there are. Very few changes, the existing parking, we're cutting that back a little bit and showing the fence, there's still plenty of parking for the square footage of the building. Adding a new entrance that will make it easier to get in and out of the proposed outside storage area and also relocate in the septic field. Petitioner submitted a letter that talks about what's getting, uh, what he intends to store out there in terms of the existing equipment that he has. And it also outlines the number of hours of operation. Um, basically, starting loading about six thirty AM and usually finishing up by five thirty, both of those things have been important to outside. Storage uses in the past, so made sure they were included in that letter. With that, um, I know the site's gonna need two variances, uh, one for outside storage and what's technically the front yard setback. And then another one, sort of a piggyback variance, uh, the fence around the outside storage in the front yard. Is, is also a separate variance by itself because of the fences in the front yard. So with that, available for any questions you may have.
Good, thank you, Mr. Snyder. Uh, to the board, are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
Mr. Snyder, you mentioned you'll be maybe storing small batches of material, two questions, what kind of material and how do you define small?
Um, well, the choice is to not have it stored there at all, it's purchased and then hits the job pretty quick. The type of material is rebar for, the, the contractor is basically a construction flatwork, uh, concrete contract. So you'd see some lumber made for, you know, forms, you'd see some wire mesh perhaps and rebar steel. Some of that, of course, will be able to fit in the building as well, but again, we've listed it as potentially outside as well, just to cover things.
Alright, thank you. Okay. Is that, uh, is that answer sufficient to Mr. Turner?
Yes, it does, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, is anyone else have any question?
Mr. Moffett, this is Gene.
Yeah, Gene.
I have a question about the equipment you're gonna store in the building. Uh, are you gonna service that equipment on the facility? And if so, are you putting in, uh, the collectors and oil water separators and those type things, I didn't see them drawing.
Yeah, the, the short answer is there might be some light repair going on in there, but not heavy repair. There might, you know, simple, inner things, might take place in the building. Um, I think we're talking full service, if they were to go in a full, full service direction, of course, those things are required by. The township and everybody probably all the way up to the EPA, so. Um, I don't think there's any current plan to retrofit any of the collectors because they're not doing that types of repair inside the building.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Uh, this is the only, keep public hearing, the planning commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for township board evaluation, we are recommending body and the township board will evaluate. Our recommendation, which is the legislative body, the township board will make the final decision. Special land use request. Uh, at this point, uh, anyone is, is welcome to offer their comments, ask any questions. I would just need your name and your address, please.
Uh, this is Jenny Jewell. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of my mother, Julie Preston, who is the owner of the land and the business. At the end of the street, five one three six six Fisher Park.
Okay.
Um, so Mr. Simone was kind enough to come out and walk the site with us. And explain what he was trying to do because his property, well, the property in question, um, connects to my property, so. We wanted to know what he was looking at, and so the only question I have is at the time, we had discussed a change in the fence that he had originally proposed. Has that been discussed?
Uh, no, what, what is your, uh, from what I understand, a six foot chain link fence that's, uh, with slats to, to shield from. View from the outside is what's been proposed.
Okay, um, at the time, we discussed the fact that there is an elementary school that, um, backed up to my property. And we have a lot of kids that walk through this property quite a bit, um, we do what we can to deter them, but. There's not much we can do about it, um, also for aesthetic purposes, we requested that he, um, look into changing the design of the fence. Um, a six foot chain link fence isn't gonna do a whole lot to keep kids out of the property, I had suggested, um. Something that wasn't scalable and preferably something eight feet, we weren't really sure what the, um. Allowance was for a height of a fence in this area, but he said he would talk to you about it and, um. And look into it, so maybe that just hasn't come up. Um, as far as we are concerned, we, that's the only, I guess, I don't know about objection, but that's the only. Change to what's been discussed that we would like made. Um, otherwise, we, you know, if he walked the site with us, he showed us what we had planned or what he had planned. Um, we think he'd be a great fit for the area, uh, we hope that he gets the site, but yeah, we, we would like, uh, a discussion on the fence if possible.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there anyone else that wishes to come? Going once? Twice? Three times? Okay, I will bring it back to the board, um. For, uh, and ask the, the township's planner for, for comments.
Chairman Moffett, um, I don't have a problem with outdoor storage that's being proposed for the site. I think it's consistent with, um, the light manufacturing industrial districts in the township. Um, Mr. Simone is proposing a fence in the front yard setback, like we discussed, it's gonna require a variance. Um, and he is, uh, planning on screening that fence, um, along with slats in there, um, to make it. Uh, you know, so, so it's not, uh, visible to all the items that are being stored out there. I don't, I don't have a problem with it, um, the fence, uh, Ms. Jewell is talking about, I had, uh, spoke to Mr. Schneider about that, he had sent over. The photo, um, and the photo that they were presenting, um, was an eight foot, uh, it looked like, Pete, correct me if I'm wrong, it looked like it was made out of, uh, metal. Um, and it would go around the, um, in the front of the property and alongside. The north property line and the east property line, I believe that fence was, uh, too harsh. And I, I don't think it would be consistent with the rest of the fencing that's in the township that we typically use.
Okay, that, that makes sense.
Can I respond to that at all?
No, you can't, you, you made your issue and, and we're gonna. We'll, we'll, we'll discuss it and then, and then make a decision. Okay, I'm sorry, Julie, did I interrupt you, was there any other?
Um, that's okay, we had some minor comments, um, from the fire department to provide a knockbox with the key for the gate. Um, just if there's gonna be any lighting, uh, on the site, if you're gonna be redoing any lighting, we'll need to know the lighting details and, um, fixtures. Uh, and like I said, other than the two variances, I think we pretty much have it all covered and I don't, uh, I don't have an objection to this use.
Okay, uh, Mr. Snyder?
Yes, sir.
You wanna weigh in on your thoughts or your client's thoughts between the six foot versus eight foot fences?
Yeah, in speaking with my client, he, he certainly, he has no objections whatsoever to going to the taller fence, uh, to an eight foot fence, so. Um, if, if they were approved subject to what we're proposing in terms of material, but eight foot high, that would be fine. In, in, and we, he was, he was actually even open to the alternate materials, which is why I brought it up with your planner. Um, but again, the, the planning, the planning department, it, it was, uh. In describing it in words, uh, it, it was, it did look like it was made out of metal and it looked like there were vertical panels. Maybe eight to twelve inches wide, painted, uh, metal metallic type. And, uh, I did sort of agree with Julie's assessment that it was, that it was pretty harsh to be right there in the front yard. Uh, again, I, uh, the intent of my client is that he's got an enclosure that's screened. So he is open to looking at alternate materials if, um, that, that could be discussed on the side apart from this meeting, but right now, I think the proposal for. Six foot chain length, uh, being changed up to eight foot is the only change that should, should come in front of you.
Okay. I guess I, I'll ask my, my, my fellow commissioners to weigh in on this. I just, I just think, I wonder, eight foot seems extreme, you know, and. I don't know that it's, it's entirely necessary, um, that a six foot slatted, I think, would, would, you know, suffice, and it's also. You know, what are those aesthetics, you know, for the community? If there was a safety, uh. Hazard potential that, that warranted an eight foot fence, I, I, I would be fine with that, I would have no issue. Um, but I just frankly don't see where that, where that exists. Because if there are kids that are. Because if there are kids that are looking to, 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 to vandalize or trespass these sites, they're doing that under, uh, you know, because they're looking for something to do. It's not like there's a path that's gonna have kids walking, because I don't know where they'd be going other than to go and, you know, create some kind of mischief.
I would agree, Mr. Chairman. I don't think an extra two feet's gonna make a difference to determine teenager. If it becomes an actual issue, I mean, we can always get the school involved or the, uh, police involved, um. Yeah, I don't think the extra two feet's gonna be a deal breaker, at least for me.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of a, sort of a little bit of a mixed use sort of area there, and so I just would hate to create, uh, uh, you know, a facility that kind of looks like a bunker, you know, some kind of, yeah, I think it would misbe to intrude. Uh, anyone else wish to comment? Okay, hearing none, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
No move.
Moved by De Seco, support by Turner, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, our recommendation this evening must be based on the following: compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use. Compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities, public services and facilities affected by the proposed use. Protect the public health, safety and welfare and the equity of public access to this site. Um, this evening, we can recommend approval of this request, disapprove the request or table it to further. At this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval, uh, and forward to the township board the special land use application. Twenty dash fifteen, special land use five for Salvatore Simone, for Simone Contracting Corporation, proposing a contractor's office with outdoor storage for the following reasons. One, the proposed use of this site for a construction office and outdoor storage is consistent with the development pattern in that area. And two, the development of this site will not interfere or discourage the development of a budding property. And three, the submission of a revised site plan is required incorporating applicable review comments from township department and chair. And four, the applicant must obtain all required variances from the zoning board of appeals.
Support.
They move by, uh, De Seco, support by Turner.
Mr. Chairman, is it okay to, this is Carl Dalu.
Yes.
Add the six-foot of fence to the motion, so.
But that's, that's what they've, that's what they've submitted, so that's what.
I, I know, but there's like, uh, differences from some opinions to six or eight.
Well, just that someone commented from the public about higher fence.
Okay. You got it.
This motion, we're, we're adopting a six, you know, we're allowing for a six-foot fence.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett.
You're welcome. Uh, any other questions? Hearing none, Commissioner De Seco?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
The Chair votes yes. Uh, okay, next item is for under old business, site plan number two zero dash zero two. Roddy Gorgeous, uh, Rio Banquet Hall, um, mound in West Utica. Is, uh, the petitioner heard, or Julie, are you addressing?
Uh, it doesn't matter. He, the petitioner, petitioner is here.
Okay, so the petitioner can state name, address, and what are you requesting?
My name is Ben Daoud. I'm representing the Rio Banquet Hall, four two Ryan Mount Road.
Okay.
Yeah, we try raise it up the, the building, six more foot. And my client, they see his building is a little, uh, low. And it's a lot of, like, this is lumber, there's a lot of lumber is on it and two by four, you know, and we try raise it up with the steel roof, six more foot.
So he's not, he's not lifting the building six feet, he's extending the.
Ex- eh, raise it up the walls.
Sightline, the sightline of the roof.
Sightline, yes.
It's a, so it's a cosmetic and cosmetic improvement.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, to the, to the planner for her comments.
Uh, I just had a couple of comments, Chairman Moffett. Um, the plans didn't indicate the extension of the modification for the south elevation. So I'm, I'm sure, uh, it was probably just omitted on the plans by, by accident. Um, and the second comment was all roof, rooftop equipment must be screened. Now, is this wall going to screen the, um, is there gonna be the rooftop equipment on top of the, the height?
We're gonna have a, uh, two-feet parapet above the, the roof.
Okay.
We have, we, we're gonna have a two-feet parapet.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure all the rooftop was, uh, equipment was, was screened with the parapet wall.
Yep, yep.
Okay, perfect. All right, I, those were my only questions, Moffett.
All right, great, thank you. Uh, to the board, are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dalu?
The, the owners of these facilities, I help them with health department, McComb County Health Department to get their license in there, so if there is any conflict in my vote, I will, um.
Now, the only conflict is any, if anyone gets sick from eating there, so.
All right, I'll be responsible for that.
So now you're on the, you're on the record now, you understand? All right, uh, if there any, if there aren't any other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
I move to approve the modified building elevation plan for site plan number twenty dash oh two for Rio Banquet Hall located at four five six six zero mound road. Based on the planner's comments and also revised, site plans must be submitted. Incorporating all of the comments from the planning commission meeting on January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty for final approval.
Support.
Yeah, moved by Turner, support by De Seco. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner De Seco?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yeah.
Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Did you get everybody? Think so. Okay, finally, we've got site plan number one nine dash one eight.
Thank you.
Madison Power? The petitioner present?
Chairman Moffett, I could explain this one.
Oh, okay.
Um, this is the Madison Power building that we approved, um, when did we approve this? Uh, last year, late last year, and what they're doing is they're just reducing the size of the building from two hundred and five feet, um, to a hundred and thirty-eight feet. Um, due to the cost of the project, they had to, um, modify the building plans. And basically what, what that reduction encompasses is just the fabrication area to the rear of the building. Um, I, I don't have any objections to this plan. Um, it's a very nice, um, very well-done site plan. None of the other, um, features changed as far as, um, you know, the elevations or site plan, you know, regarding parking or anything else, so. Um, the driveway was shifted slice, slightly to the east, um, based on McComb County Road Commission comments. But other than that, um, nothing has changed on this site plan.
Yeah. It's not gonna cause more things to be stored externally and outside, or?
No, no, they don't have, the new plans don't have any outdoor storage or anything else, um, proposed.
Okay.
So this is a commercial property anyway, um, you know, outdoor storage is not, not allowed, um, so.
Right, okay, I'm just saying, if they're reducing footprint.
Right.
Just a question.
Yeah.
Uh, to the board, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Jim?
Mr. Dalu, Mr. Dalu?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I move, I move to approve the modified site plan nineteen dash eighteen for Sha- Sean Leland Total uh, trailer located in the south side of Auburn Road, East O'Ryan Road.
Support.
Okay, moved by Dalu, support by De Seco. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, uh, Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner De Seco?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yeah.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
The Chair votes. Uh, planning directors report?
I don't have anything, Chairman Moffett.
Okay, business from the floor, does anyone wish to comment on anything? Once, twice, three times, uh, Mr. Dalu, you're up.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there support? All in favor?
Aye.
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 We're adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night. Good luck for voting.